October 19th for the city of North St. Paul. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody this time. Jenny, if you take the roll.
Councilmember Thorson.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Cole is absent. Mayor Frillow?
Here. Coram is present. Sorry about the city manager. I didn't realize her out of the room. Motion to adopt the agenda.
I move, Your Honor.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's, the motion carries. We do have the consent agenda, and I would like to remove item M from the consent agenda. Is that correct, city manager?
Yes, please.
And the reason for that is that the application is not complete, and he understands the whole process and was talked to today, and he understands what's going on. So I'd like to remove item M.
Okay.
Is there any other? Well, I'll go through it first. So the consent agenda is October 5th workshop meeting minutes to October 5th regular meeting minutes, general claims of $1,455,666, HRA claims of $30,715.75, ED claims of $66, the monthly building permit report September of 2021, resolution approving acceptance of donations received in September, 2022 SCORE grant fund application approval, proposed park policy and fees, approved the ordinance amending title, Chapter 30 of the North St. Paul City Code concerning mayor and council salaries, approved First Amendment and consent to modifications of tenants amended and restated communication site lease agreement, application for charitable gambling permit to conduct excluded bingo by the Knights of Columbus for November 13th. We'll take out item M, and then the last one is North St. Paul Police Department, JPA and Court Services Amendment annul. This time, if any council member would like to remove any other item, they can do so at this time. Councilmember Thorson.
Yeah, item C, I, and J.
Item C.
General claims.
I. And J. Anybody else? If not, motion to approve the consent agenda, taking out items C, I, and J, and also item M. Is there a motion?
It's all moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's, the motion carries. This time, the meeting open to the public. I've got two here. RT, welcome. You make my head spin.
I do. Okay. Well, that's... I don't know what to say about that, honestly. Is that good or bad?
No, it's just from all the emails that were flying out this last weekend.
And first of all, where's Soren? Hey, Soren. Thank you. Thank you for engaging in the process and sitting down and meeting and going back and forth a little bit by email. That was great.
That's what I mean by that.
No, that's...
There was a lot going on.
That's what I'm... I'm appreciative of that, so I appreciate Soren. I did write a little bit today, though. So when the Eagle Scouts reached out to you guys regarding a presentation on wood duck houses, did you respond? I mean, wood duck houses and the lessons learned by an Eagle Scout are important, but what economic impact do they have? Kokor volleyball brings approximately 150,000 unique visitors into downtown. We're unique because this is a captive audience for an hour or two hours, where they're going to drop off their athletes, they're going to hang out, and then they're going to go home after two hours. They're not necessarily, because they're coming from a distance, they aren't going to go home and come back. They're going to stay in the area. That's what makes them unique, and that's a potential impact of approximately $1.5 million per year if they just spend 10 bucks on their visit. That's going to get in gas, that's going to Target, that's visiting the local shops that are downtown like Love's, who we worked with this past weekend, and handed out information so we would drive business over there. The time the council member Cole, not here today.
You can talk to him.
Okay, thank you. The time the council member Cole has spent on the unsightly, biologically beneficial weeds in Casey Lake is important. There's no doubt about that. And equally as important are his updates when he comes back to the council and presents and makes things public. But what kind of impact do those unsightly weeds have on taxpayers? We presented you, as you know, with an offer to purchase the building, and that offer would decrease the tax levy by approximately half. Yet, when we ask the city manager to be on the agenda and make a presentation, we don't even get a response. Further, I've heard no updates from the council formed that was in charge of whatever it is they were in charge of negotiating with us or communicating with us. I've heard no updates, and I've attended every single meeting since July 7th-ish, when they were appointed on that committee. Heard no public updates. Yet, I found out from their attorney that they met with a commercial property advisor of some type. That would have been good to know. That transparency is needed. Otherwise, we fill the information gap with our experiences, and I'll be honest, our experiences haven't been awesome all the time. Information we know has been withheld from the council, even this last time, when we submitted an offer and made it clear in our meeting that the library portion was negotiable. Councilmembers, if you want the library to say, say the word.
So RT, we haven't had that discussion yet in regards to that.
Great.
We haven't had that meeting yet.
Okay.
So you're dropping the gun in regards to all that.
Because what I was told by the attorney and Brian, more Soren than anything, was that we'd hear back by the end of the week, something would be put on the agenda, you guys would meet in closed session, that all of those things would potentially occur. I've received no word about anything. And I guess that's my concern, and I'm going to move on. I'm going to move past that for now, because I need you guys to understand who we are. Okay, I mean, you guys know that we're successful at volleyball. We've won a national championship. We have All-Americans. We have area champions. But did you know that Kokor volleyball helps local grade school, middle school, high schools, and colleges and universities raise funds to support their schools and athletic programs? Since we were open here in the metro, we've helped programs raise over $1 million. We've been open for 10 years, and these are local programs. You guys heard a little bit about that this past summer when we were talking about North High School and the fact that we helped them raise $10,000 for their volleyball program by hosting events on four simple dates. That's the impact that we have on this community. Did you know that Kokor volleyball provides access to physical, mental, and emotional wellness programs for all of our athletes, including, but not limited to, physical strength programs, of course, I mean volleyball, but academic tutoring and counseling services? There's not a program in the metro, possibly in the nation, that offers the services that we do to our athletes and families. We provide scholarship funds and fundraising opportunities for our families so that they can afford the program, because volleyball is expensive, traveling and playing in big tournaments. That's expensive. And we provide between $500 and $2,000 toward their fees if they participate in those activities. We run the largest events in the Twin Cities, and we lead North Star Volleyball United, which is a group of club directors in the area that collaborate and coordinate things. But we are the leaders there, and per the recommendation of State Senator Weiger, we sat on the committee, the governor's committee, to reopen youth sports during the pandemic. We volunteer our time to do those things, to help the other businesses in the area and help the kids. We're great tenants. You've said so on many occasions, and I'm exempting no one from that because I know you've all said it. Did you know that we're the ones that help the library when things just don't quite go right? When their roof is leaking on their collection or near their collection, we're the ones that go up there and fix it? We did that on many occasions for them. We are the type of business that North St. Paul needs to attract to continue its growth, and we want to be here. We want to work with you. If you, again, if you want the library to stay, say the word. We love the library. We love Ann. And we've presented you with an offer that, if you want, you can meet their needs too by moving them. They were there today, and they said they'd love a new space. Accept our offer, work with us on that offer, and if you still want the library, move the library.
Again, we haven't gone in the RT. You know, we haven't been presenting the offer, and, you know, with selling the building, you know, back when Shifsky's was looking at it also, we determined that as, we didn't vote on it, but the popular of the council was to keep the community center. We feel that we need it for our future, so we wanted to keep it. So we haven't discussed that yet in regards to your offer yet.
Okay.
But I'm just telling you that, you know...
That's fair.
Majority of the council, a while back, we're going to keep the community center as an asset for us.
I understand. And what I also know from listening to those closed-door sessions was that the information provided to the council at that time when they made that decision was not fully presented. It wasn't. I mean, if you want to go down a tiny rabbit hole, we know that the city makes money on the building right now based on the contracts and et cetera. And if it's in the range of $70,000 per year, which we think it is, but even though I've submitted two data requests, I can't get any of that information, submitted twice. So if it's $70,000 per year, we've been there for seven years, that's $490,000. Where's that money? You're about to levy the taxpayer $650,000 for capital improvements. There should be money saved, and you have an offer to purchase the building. I'd like you to sit down and actually consider these things and consider factual information, including appraisals that are done by a bank. Why is that important? Because they're the ones that are going to loan the money. And if you have a bank that's only going to give you a certain amount for it, by the way, our offer is the full appraised value of the latest appraisal, full appraised value. So if you think it's worth more and a bank is only willing to loan that amount, that person's going to have to come in with that amount of cash. Good luck.
Thanks, RT. John Schmal. Welcome, John.
Good evening, mayor and council. This came up on September 8th. Up to that point in time, every time you received a call from the city of North St. Paul, the caller ID would come up, "City of North St. Paul." And I had called the city, and Cynthia was going to get back to me, and I wasn't there when the call came in, and I looked at my phone, and it said, "City of Roseville." And I thought, "That's interesting. What do they want with me?" So I hit the button to take the message, and it was Cynthia. And so I called her and I said, "Do you know that you are identified as the city of Roseville?" Well, people don't call themselves, so they don't know what they're identified as. And she said, "No, I didn't." And I said, "Well, or she didn't." So I'd like to let you know, it's now city of Roseville. So she said she'd see what she could do, and about two weeks later, I had a phone call come back in, and I was there at the time, and it came up, "Twin Cities, Minnesota." But it was 747-2400. So the next time, I called her back at that time and said, "It didn't work. You're still not the city of North St. Paul, as you had been for the X number of years that I've been dealing with this, and we'll look into it." And so yesterday, anticipation of seeing or coming here, I called Jenny, and I said, "Would you call me, please, to see what you're identified as?" Well, it happened to be, now the thing gets bigger. I had, I did this from my cellphone. So we got a whole new idea, involvement in their systems, who and how many there are that are their systems. And so I said, "Could you call me? I'm at the Polar Chev right now. Just leave a message, and I'll see what it shows up as." And it still shows up as Twin Cities, Minnesota. I don't know how hard it is and who's involved, but Jenny said that she called, that it was CenturyLink that had to change this. Well, it's CenturyLink. Maybe, I thought it was going to be Roseville, tears-old outfit that runs the phone system, but maybe there's a, there's no chance of ever getting North St. Paul back on a landline now. Now, how many people have landlines? I do. So it's the identification.
I still have one, too.
Okay, so you could get a call from Twin Cities MN. So anyway...
But again, you know, this is something that, is something that we never had before, especially a landline. Now, we got this thing that tells us where it's coming from.
Yes.
I wish, so I'd just put a piece of black tape on it, and you don't know who they're...
No, that isn't it. You just don't answer it. I mean, you ignore it.
You don't answer, okay.
You don't need a 3M, 33-plus electrical tape. You don't have to do that. You just walk away from it. But if you are expecting a call from North St. Paul because you have a call in there, grab that. There it is. It's North St. Paul. But it's not there anymore, and I don't know from what Jenny has called in on and where we're going to get an answer if we can ever get that back. Who controls that? And are you interested in having that happen? Maybe not. Who cares, right? But I just thought it was very interesting. Second item that I have on there that I put, excuse me, on the slip, when you're retired, you get a chance to walk out your front door and see what's going by on the street. And back two weeks ago, what went by on the street was a black Explorer. I thought it was, might have been a squad car, but it wasn't as far as I could see, and maybe Councilmember Thorson, with his eye problems, that he had said couldn't read that thing, could have picked it out, but there was just a spot when the car went by that I could see the letters CE on it. And that's all. And I said, "Pol, police, what was that? Oh, well, what the hell." And the next week, I'm talking to the neighbor, and we're out on the street, and it looks like a black Explorer coming up. Ah, I think that's a squad car. Stopped him, and I said, "What's with this? You can't read it. There's no way you can read the markings on the side of the squad, except if you get, you know, right, in the right light, you can actually see it." So I said to the officer, "What's with this? You can't read it." And he said, "Well, it's a, we're trying to keep the visibility down," which is, I don't know, maybe that's a, you want to, you know, be unseen in your vehicles. But I said to him, "You're driving an Explorer, a black Explorer, a black Explorer with a grille guard, with rubber bumpers, big rubber bumpers on the grille guard, you've got painted black rims, and you've got a little hubcap. What do you think you're driving? Doesn't anybody know what that tells you, what you're driving? Why do you even concern yourself with having something that you can't make out?" And at that time, my neighbor says to me, or to the officer, "You can't read that," and which is absolutely true. So it's just not me. You can't read that. I have, one of the hunting, my hunting buddies is an officer in a, excuse me, a northern suburb, and I called and I said, "Do you have markings that you can't read?" And he said, "Yeah, they're called ghost graphics." Maybe it's a new thing in policing, is ghost graphics. And he said, "They're assigned to the two vehicles that do traffic, and they don't have light bars, they don't have bumpers, they don't have grille guards. They want to be unseen." So I guess, is that the markings, and that's only on two vehicles for that department, is that the marking for all our vehicles that you can't read? I, you know, I don't understand the need to say, "We need ghost graphics," when you got it on a vehicle that everybody knows is a squad car. So I don't know. Do you happen to know?
I don't have the answer.
Don't have an answer. Okay.
No.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, John. We have no, anybody on Zoom? Nobody on Zoom? We have no public hearings, so at this time, we have the city business and action items. And I'll turn it over to city manager Frandl.
Thank you, mayor. The first city business action item and recommendations is the award, award the sale of $2,525,000 general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2021A. I'll turn that over to Dan Winick, our finance director.
Mayor, council members, it is with my great pleasure to introduce Terry Heaton from Baker Tilly. She will talk about the results of the bond sale today.
Welcome, Terry. Appreciate, yep, you can use that.
Thank you, Mr. Winick, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. This evening, I have good news for you regarding the general obligation refunding bond sale that was undertaken to save money on your outstanding 2014 AP bonds. And there's a fabulous write-up in the agenda explaining the history and so forth. And so tonight, certainly happy to answer questions on that, but I'm here to provide the results of that sale and the savings that were achieved. So bids were received in our office. We offered a $2,525,000 bond, and we received three bids. The low bid came from Northland Securities, and they were listed in the handout that was distributed this evening. Our estimate a month ago, when we received authorization to proceed, for the interest rate was 1.0594%. That makes me really nervous when we put interest rates like that out there. And this is for bonds that go from now through 2030. And the actual interest rate, the low bid came in at 1,0885. So just between two and three basis points different from our estimate, so very on track. Our estimated savings on this bond issue was $141,991, and the actual savings are very close to that. They're at $136,470, so within $5,000. So the markets really stayed close to where they were. The other piece is you received a premium bond, so instead of issuing $2,525,000, there was a price they pay for the bonds, and it's all factored into their interest rates and so forth when they're awarded the bonds. But what that means is your resolution that you'll be adopting tonight will be based, you received a resolution with the blanks, and what is, what we have a copy of and what will be filled in is a lower number, the bond issue will be reduced to $2,395,000, and you will still be able to call the bonds. So all of that is great news, and along with that, you might recall, we do a credit rating call with Standard and Poor's, and so that's also great news. The city's bond rating is in the double A category, which is very high and performed very well for you in the market. That was affirmed by Standard and Poor's, and they have a lot of very good comments about the strong economy, the growing market value, continued residential development, and being part of a broad and diverse market as part of the Minneapolis-St. Paul MSA. Consistent operating surpluses and available reserves, all positive. And they talk in particular, and this is, you know, sometimes you have control over things that happen, your tax base, you may or may not, you know, the socioeconomic pieces of your community, you can work slowly over time to change that. But the part that is immediately rewarded is the good financial management practices that you have that are noted in here. Solid reporting that you do, the budget to actual results to the city on a quarterly basis, the investment, the formal reserve policy at 35% of expenditures so that you don't have to do short-term borrowing, and all of those gave you very high scores. And your team that were on the credit rating call answered questions about the American Rescue Plan, the extraordinary situation that you've gone over and, you know, lived through, and all of us in the last couple of years, what impact that had on your tax base, and came back, and they feel that they expect your budgetary performance will remain strong. So it's a very solid report card to the city and a very nice report to your investors on the bonds and part of why you had the good results in the market today. And you have a relatively new team on the rating calls, and so, just amazing, they just picked up, answered all the questions, were knowledgeable, and really represented the city very well. It was almost surprising that they could just come through the way they did, so I thought you'd want to know that. You had a very solid team on the phone.
Good to hear.
And so with that, we recommend a word to the low bid of Northland Securities at 1.0885.
Any questions for Terry?
I have good news. Thank you, Terry.
You always bring us good news.
Yes. Well, I just report the news, but luckily, it was all good.
Thank you. So the motion is resolution providing for the issuance and sale of $2,525,000 general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2021A, and pledging net revenues and levying a tax for the payment thereof? Is that the...
It's correct, and the only change would be the amount of the bonds in the final resolution will be reduced to $2,395,000.
Okay, so noted. At this time, a motion?
Motion, Your Honor?
Motion by Councilmember Peterson?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's, motion carries. Thank you, Terry. Appreciate it. City manager Frandl.
Thank you, mayor. Next item, calling for redemption of certain outstanding bonds, general obligation municipal building refund bonds, Series 2012A. I'll turn that over to Dan Winick, our finance director.
Mayor and city council members, this is the second part of our debt plan that we had established through the budget process, and this will be recalling the general obligation municipal building refunding bonds of 2012. And there's approximately $805,000 remaining outstanding. We have accumulated enough funds after we get property tax payments in December to be able to pay this off. This will be paying it off two years early, and if there's any questions, either myself or Terry can answer them.
Any questions for finance director or Terry? No questions. Doing a good job. So the, there's a resolution. I don't have it in here, but I believe it's the...
Yes, there was a resolution.
Resolution, calling for redemption of certain outstanding bonds, general obligation municipal building refunding bonds, Series 2012A. That's the motion.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thorson. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's, the motion carries. Thank you, finance director and Terry. Thank you very much for all your hard work. City manager Frandl.
Thank you, mayor. Next up is the parking recreation budget spending. I believe Morgan was going to speak to that. Lisa turned it in, but...
So I had kind of a discussion with Morgan this afternoon, and I think what we want to do is table this for right now, and Morgan, I don't know if you can maybe add a little insight to that reasoning? I just don't think that, I don't think it's complete yet.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so I was...
You have a little history on it.
I have some history and background. I was, I didn't know it was on the agenda tonight, so I wasn't involved with that portion of it. So a little bit of what the mayor and myself talked about before the... myself talked about before the council meeting was speculative. But I do think it's fair because Councilmember Cole is not here tonight, and I, I'm not aware of, you know, a rush or a pressing need for the council to consider what I think is a recommended action that I'm not familiar with unfortunately tonight. But I think, you know, staff can get a little bit more prepared. And what I do know is that staff had reached out to me and WSB for some assistance with what was initially a staff-led park improvement plan update process, just because with workload and running out of time in the year, and I think the Park Commission did want to have something completed this year. So WSB is assisting. The proposal that's in your packet was not accepted and not approved, so that's not what we're doing, just so everyone's clear. But we are just providing some administrative assistance to help pull things together. My understanding is that we've committed, WSB is committed to staff to, to provide a draft for internal review and comment, and then the plan is to present to Parks Commission first and potentially council if we can, you know, fit it in with the meeting schedule in the month of December. But as far as the packet and staff recommended action for consideration, I certainly think it's fair because Councilmember Cole is not here tonight to continue that to the next meeting. And again, staff will have a little bit more, more coordinated coordination, I think, in front of you at the next meeting, so that's what I have to add.
I'd like to make a motion to table it this time?
So moved.
Second.
Second, I mean.
Moved by Councilmember Wong, second by Councilmember Peterson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, we'll table that. City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. The next up is adopt the 2022 to 2031 capital improvement plan, and I will turn that over to Dan Winick, our Finance Director.
Mayor, council members, this is the 2022 to 2031 capital improvement plan. You have seen it on a number of occasions. If you remember, in, on September 21st, we tabled this item, so it could go in front of the Planning Commission for their review. On October 7th, that was reviewed by the Planning Commission, and they unanimously approved that the 2022, 2020, 2031 capital improvement plan complies with the 2040 comprehensive plan. They also made some good recommendations. I actually watched the whole video. I have to give great kudos to, to the commission. They actually had a fantastic dialogue. Our engineer, Morgan, did an absolutely fabulous job. And they made some suggestions of looking at multimodal transportation opportunities on the aerial project, which we will look at. And they also discussed that in the future, we need to, to look at developing plans that are utilizing trails and paths to connect the city, and primarily the gateway trail, and to the parks and to the downtown area. And I think the comment of the councilperson, the Chair of the Planning Commission, was something to the effect that we need to, to look at who's going to be living in the city in the future, and not just what, who's here today. And I thought that was just an excellent comment. Since that meeting and since the review, we've made two additional adjustments to the CIP plan. One is the community center improvements have been removed from the CIP plan, and the funding source has been removed at this point in time. Staff is currently working on doing a complete assessment of the community center, and that'll be coming back as a separate item for your consideration and, in, in the future. And then we made an additional change in reducing the useful life of the police vehicles based upon the recommendation of the police chief. Everything else was the same. And so I'm asking that today it be the 2022 to 2031 capital improvement plan be adopted and approved. And we have to remember that this will be something that will be looked at on an annual basis. And there's a number of commissions that will be incorporated into that review process into the future. In addition, it can be changed at, at any time by, based on City Council approval.
Any questions for Finance Director? Looks like a good plan.
Can you give a little bit more context on the community center, please?
A little bit more context on the community center? You know, I, I think in, in prior discussions, I think what was in there was $650,000, and that was to cover the roof, some of the exterior work. I think Public Works Director, Mr. Ritchie, had come up here the last meeting and, and had talked about that they had just kind of, that they were in the process of, of looking at going out for a formal bid specification, but he had reached out to a couple of roofing companies, and what was in the capital plan, the roof was at about $250,000. And all of the information that we're getting back from companies is that'll be higher than that amount. And so I just think it's, it's more, staff made the recommendation that it would be more prudent to get somebody, to get an outfit to actually go out and look and do a complete facility assessment, getting those costs, what's needed, you know, in, in like year one to three, three to five, five to 10, and so forth, so the City Council can see what the cost is of, of maintaining that facility as a whole. And as soon as that information is compiled, then we would end up bringing that back to the City Council and look for direction of, of what is desired to do with the, the community center. But I think it, it's prudent that we get a, a full picture at this point in time.
In terms of timeline, do you know what that, what the results of that will be?
At this point in time, and I'm going to ask the Public Works Director, Mr. Ritchie, to, to come up and change. I know we had reached out to Wald Architectural and Engineering Firm to get a proposal to do a facility assessment. They have responded, I think it was on Friday. I don't know exactly where we're at, or if we've reached out to anybody else.
Yeah, Councilmember Wong, I met with both consultants, Wald, and then in Inspect Company. They're both are getting together a proposal to give us a bid, to give us an assessment on the building. So they're putting that together. The timing of that, I, we just, I'm just waiting for the second bid to come back. I'm hoping to have it by the end of the week, and then we can go from there.
Any other questions, Councilmember Wong? So at this time, we have the resolution adopting the 2022, 2030, 2022, 2031 capital improvement plan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick item for the report from City Manager Departments, and that is the date of, pardon me?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to add the?
Item C I.
Oh, that's right.
C I N J, so.
So first item up would be, consent item C, general claims of $1,455,666. Turn that over to Councilmember Thorson.
Okay, so we got, Councilmember Thorson, go ahead.
Question on a charge here. I'm trying to find the page number. It's page 10 of 16. It says, the spectacular cleaning LLC. There's a charge, September 2021, janitorial Casey events, 1,275. Is that, and then the other's October 2020, janitorial expenses, Casey Park, 860. I'm just curious, is that additional charge, is due to the damage that was done when that event took place at that facility, or is, I mean, we, we can't see the detail of, of why there's a difference there, but I know there's been instances at Casey Park and Housie Park where individuals who have rented the park have done extensive damage, and there's, there's a need for excessive amounts of cleaning. Is that, can we get some detail on that?
Yes, Councilmember Thorson. No, actually, these bills, they bill like on a monthly basis, and so there's like a certain charge, and I can't tell you the exact amount. If it's like $35 per charge, so then there's a number of events that they go, and then they multiply it out. That's why it ends up coming up to like a, a $1,275 bill. But it was, to my recollection, it was not due to a single event. It was due, it's the whole month of September.
And the reason I'm asking is because this leads into the, the parks fees discussion on whether we're looking at raising fees and establishing a security deposit. Part of our existing plan and in the updated plan, it clearly states that, you know, if you do damage, you're responsible for it. But it didn't sound like we followed through to bill those individuals who have rented the parks, and that's happened. Is that correct?
That I cannot directly answer at this time. I, to get information, bring that back for you.
And then I was just looking through that, too. On that same page, a little higher up, it says ROC Inc., Janitorial Library. Is that, we're, I'm assuming they're referring to the library at the community center, that space?
That is correct.
Okay. I guess I wasn't aware that we paid for the cleaning of that space as well.
Yeah, actually, per the lease of the, with the library, actually, the city is responsible for all operational costs.
I just, you know, this detail, sometimes it changes, and I prefer the additional detail, but it's just spring a question. So I, those are just two items that I had questions on in the billing here.
Is that it? Okay, so the motion is for the general claims of $1,455,666. Is there a motion to accept those claims?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, general claims are paid. Then we got item I, which is the proposed park policy and fees. And Councilmember Thorson?
Yeah, so, I mean, I can already discuss this before about, you know, the issues we've been having with damage to some of these facilities, and, and the belief that re-establishing a, a security deposit will help. I certainly am supportive of that. But I'm just concerned that, you know, if, if our current policy, and, and it's in bold, I'm going to read it, "The renters will be held responsible and billed for any unnecessary cleanup losses or damages above and beyond your deposit, as well as be subject to loss of rental privileges." If we're not currently enforcing that, you know, it just kind of seems like we're not, we're not accomplishing much here. We're just, we're rate, we're, we're charging responsible people more money. We're establishing a security deposit, which most people will get refunded, but the ones that violate the policy, we're not even following through, it seems. And, and that's just a concern to me. And so I would, I feel like first, it would be to address that before we look to raise rates and, and hope that a, a security deposit will help defer that type of behavior. And then my other concern is that, you know, I'm sure that this has happened, was it a handful of times, six, seven times? I'm not sure. We don't get reports on a regular basis when this happens. It's just been brought to our attention that it's happening more frequently. And when we're discussing the security deposits, if, let's say, on average, the additional damage is $1,000, and if we're only charging 350 for a non-resident, and then we're not following up and doing the billing, I mean, it's just really not accomplishing much. And so, are we charging enough? I don't know. Can't really answer that because we don't have that information. But, I mean, I, I don't really support the increase in the rental fee. But I do support the, the deposit, and I just want to reiterate how important I think it is that we follow up and bill these individuals who rent the park, do damage. And if they don't pay, I mean, we can't, we can't just say, well, we just figured we wouldn't pay if we don't send them an invoice. Of course, they're not going to pay, you know? If I do accounting work for someone and I never bill them, I'm not going to expect to get paid. I mean, we at least have to, to follow up with that step. And if they are a resident, I would believe if they didn't pay, we'd have the ability to assess them like we are with these assessments for other unpaid bills. So I think it's important that we key in on that aspect, too. And I think, you know, whatever is causing this, I mean, people's behaviors will change when they see these sorts of things happen. And if we have the reputation of just, you know, go in there and tear the place up, and they come in and clean it up, I mean, people are going to continue to do it. So we can't keep doing the same thing and expect different results. So that's why I pulled it. I just want to make those comments. I mean, I think I'm just going to vote no, because I don't, I don't like the raise in the rates to rent it. I know Tim's not here. It sounds like everyone was supportive of it, but, I mean, that's all.
Okay. And to me, it's, you know, you do charge a deposit, you know, at the liquor store, we charge deposits for kegs, and people, if you do charge something, at least it deters, you know, a portion of that. If somebody, if there is no deposit, they just let it go and not worry about it. And I don't know why our policy is we're not billing, you know? That is an issue I think that we need to address. But I think having that deposit in there, having that reputation that we will take your money, you know, that deposit of money if there is some sort of damage. But I don't know. Brian, do you know why we're not charging?
I will make sure that that gets done. I will follow up on that. Yeah, it should have been through my directive anyway, so that was probably my responsibility. I'll make sure it happens.
And I would like to just add that I am not sure that we have not billed individuals. That's something that we need to, to look at. But if that isn't being billed, that will be corrected. So yeah, I think there was a little bit further information that we'll get back to you on that, Councilmember Thorson.
And just to clarify, too, I mean, so if someone goes to the extent that they've damaged the, I know police have responded to many of these instances, and, you know, that's taking up our resources for something that, you know. So, I mean, I, I mean, typically, we don't bill for police and fire response unless it's deemed excessive and a nuisance. But, you know, that, this kind of stuff plays into that as well. And, you know, I, I think maybe that might be part of the reason, is because we've never done it before, and it's kind of like, well, who's responsible? You know, Public Works went down there and did it, and maybe they just put it to parks time, and there's no actual follow-up from finance to say, oh, by the way, you were supposed to give us the, how many guys were there? How much time you were there? What equipment you used? I mean, I, I don't, sometimes it sounds like some of this stuff was to the extent where they're, they're dispatching like the street sweeper and having to sweep the whole entire lot. I mean, we've got a bill scheduled for that. It's not cheap. But, you know, it's just kind of mind-boggling that someone could rent a facility and do, cause $2,000, $3,000 worth of Public Works time, and, 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 you know, there's just no follow-up on that. I mean, that's got to change.
Right. And, and Councilmember Thorson, I absolutely agree with you. I, I do want to make a little bit of a clarification. If, if something is given to the Finance Department to invoice, it gets invoiced. So it's really, we need to have more of a discussion on the communication and the protocol in which we're getting that information to be able to, to bill somebody. So that's something that we can work on. And again, I'm not dismissing the fact that we may have already been billing these. So that's, you know, I'd like to get all of the information and then be able to have a more constructive discussion on this.
I have asked that question before, and I thought we were told that we hadn't been doing it. But if we have been, then that's.
Yeah, and?
But I think, what I'm just saying- But I think, what I'm just saying is, I think the problem is that because we haven't done it before, and because this has been an issue, I mean, there's, who takes the reservation at the parks, is it the community development, or is it, okay, so then, so they take the reservation, police respond to report the incident, public works goes down to clean it, and then finance is responsible for invoicing it, so there needs to be communication between that, and on top of everything else we have going on, and on top of the fact that, yeah, we're stretched with help, so, it's not meant to be criticism of the finance or criticism of anyone, it's just, I want to point that out, that, you know, we need to, we need to follow up on that.
I think our public works person wants to talk.
I just think that we need to, we'll probably have to all get together, come up with something, because we're down there once a week fixing something, the police are down there probably once a week, because the people aren't leaving on time, you know, so looking at what our policy is, what their damage deposit includes, if the police got to come down there at eleven thirty, and they're supposed to be out there at eleven, in my opinion, they shouldn't get their damage deposit back, because we're having to send them down there, so, you know, between the police, between public works, with, you know, going down there at, you know, one o'clock in the morning, shutting the water off, because the sink was ripped off the wall, or the soap dispensers got ripped off the wall, or, you know, whatever it might be, I think we need to get together, come up with a process, so, hey, when we go down there, we bill our time, maybe we put something, we bill our time as this, or, and if the police are having to go down there to remove the people, I mean, that should be billed, so, I mean, I have not sent Dan anything for, you know, hey, bill this out and invoice that hasn't got billed out, I mean, I don't know what happens, you know, on the, up at the city hall side for damage deposits or how that works, but if we, if we should get some, something down, so we can write this stuff down, put it in, so it can be billed out properly, so.
Sure.
We'll work on something.
Wasn't making any accusations, I'm just saying, I acknowledge that there's multiple departments, and that, you know, if there's not some policy procedure, and everyone knows, like, public works gets called to clean it up, you guys don't ask questions, you go clean it up.
Right.
You know, and if finance isn't getting a bill for it, and they may not be aware of it, and, you know, and maybe community development thinks, well, public works did it, they're, they're telling finance what's going on, so they just want to make sure we're communicating and that this gets resolved and hopefully doesn't happen anymore.
Yeah, and it's kind of a mad scramble, because when someone rents it off, they get it for, it's starting at seven o'clock the next morning, so if they're not out of there at eleven, they don't get out of there till one o'clock in the morning, they have to clean it up, you know, normally the cleaning people are sending me texts and pictures at one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning, hey, there's water running out the door, I have to get someone down there to get the thing fixed, so it's presentable before the next people come in the next day, so, a lot of this stuff, you know, it just kind of gets lost in the shuffle with the day-to-day stuff, you know, so we'll come up with something and, you know, I guess talk about it at a later time.
Yeah, and it's important to talk about this too, to have a full understanding, especially when we're talking in the future about capital improvement plans of other parks, and that, you know, these, these closed shelters are certainly nicer, but they're expensive initially, and they are also expensive for maintenance and repairs when this sorts of things happen, where to my knowledge, you know, these open-air shelters, you know, what's graffiti and any damage, but they're not, you know, sinks aren't getting ripped off and stuff like that, so it's just something to keep in mind, that, you know, I think it's lost in conversations at other levels, that we need to be mindful of that, so it's good that we're having the conversation.
Yep.
Thank you, Ron, appreciate it. So the motion is for, unless there's anything more, Councilmember Thorson?
Yep.
Motion is for to approve the proposed revised park policy and fee schedule, is there a motion?
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Wong, any other discussion, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
Motion carries. And we have one more item, and I believe that's item J, and that is the approved, the ordinance amending the North St. Paul City Code concerning mayor and council salaries. And Councilmember Thorson.
Yeah, just real quick comment on this, I mean, I made it clear in prior statements that I'm opposed to the council pay, I'm obviously supportive of me not accepting pay, so the way this is laid out, it's kind of difficult for me to vote yea or nay, and likewise, if there was a council member who felt opposite, but obviously, you know, it sounds like prior discussion, the majority of the council is supportive of this, so I just wanted to pull it, to make that comment and to vote on it.
Okay, appreciate that, so the motion is for the approval of amending Title III, Chapter 30 of the North St. Paul City Code concerning mayor and council salaries.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second, Your Honor.
Seconded by Councilmember Peterson, any other discussion, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. City manager Frandl, anything, reports of city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, one quick item, on the November second meeting time for the council meeting will need to be adjusted, do you need to be done by 6:00 PM due to voting that day, so we'll have to adjust the time back, what time works best?
So I think in the past, we've done an earlier meeting, four o'clock, if everybody's okay with four o'clock, or should we schedule another meeting?
Well, I was just gonna say, unless there's something pressing for a workshop, why don't we just cancel the workshop and have the meeting at five, and is it not time to be done by six, I mean, otherwise, we could just cancel everything and reschedule.
My only concern is if we want to talk about the community center at that point, or is that, do we have enough time at that point to talk about that?
I don't know how much time we would need, I mean, even if you made it for like a half hour to talk about that, and then move on into the council meeting?
And that's my only case, if we don't talk about it at November second, then we're pushing another two weeks, unless we have a special meeting and just have a regular meeting, cancel this one and have it.
I personally would support that, just because, I mean, pushing meetings out into the day is difficult for people, well, for me anyway, and then, but I can make it work if it works for everyone else, but I mean, I think if we could just have, reschedule it for another day at the normal times, I think that would be ideal, whether it be Monday or the following Wednesday, I don't know if that was overlapping some commission meetings or anything like that, but I'd hate to put a time restraint on any important topics, I guess I wasn't, I don't know what agenda items would have been scheduled, I mean, we get them on Friday before, so I don't know what's on the docket for that stuff.
So we could do, you know, that Monday or the third?
The first, I have one, it's about the third, I guess. The third is Arts and Culture Commission meeting.
Yeah, it's, if we, if we move it to four thirty on Tuesday too, we could run into the same issues, I mean, we could, the conversation could just get halted at six, and then we're gonna have to schedule another meeting again, so, we could, but, you know.
We could shoot for the second and play as much time as we can between four and six.
I think that would be really helpful.
Because it kept the agenda maybe a little lighter, but we need to do some business, we need to do some business.
Right, Councilmember Wong?
Yeah, I think that would be valuable, considering we're in discussions about the community center, that we get that as, on the table as soon as possible for discussion.
At least start the discussion.
Yeah.
So we'll keep, we'll, we'll schedule from four o'clock to six o'clock on November second?
For workshop or?
For both.
Okay. You don't have to distinguish time between, we have to schedule a time for the council meeting.
We could do four to four thirty, or four to five for the workshop?
Four to five, five to six?
Councilmembers, what do you think?
Well, do we, can we just have a regular meeting, what, why do we need a workshop?
If we were to talk about the community center.
Well, we don't have to take action on things, and we can have just discussion in a regular meeting about a topic and not vote on it, can't we?
Mayor, members of council, that is correct, you could simply place it on the agenda for a discussion item and schedule the entire time as a meeting, so that way you're not restricting your time between the two, thank you.
Thanks.
We could do that.
So in a workshop, just council meeting from four to six?
Yep.
It can't go past six, and if we can't finish our conversation, we'll just.
Table it.
Table it, and then schedule something that works for me.
Okay, it works.
Thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
All you got? Okay, reports of council commission committees, Councilmember Wong?
So the Joint EDA and Planning Commission meeting is this October twenty-first, so this Thursday, here in the chambers at six thirty, I think there's probably some energy, at least from the Planning Commission, on discussing some transportation and what that might look like, and how that might benefit economic development, on October twenty-fifth, we'll have our task force meeting, in which representatives from Planning Commission, from the EDA, will, will discuss the redevelopment plan down, down there, and then also, I think both myself and Councilmember Thorson will be there, as for the November fourth meeting for Planning Commission, we're still discussing sign ordinance, so that's just kind of wrapping up there, I think there is some direction and what that might look like, and, and we had a lot of discussion around, you know, the complexity of it, and its format, and how confusing it is, so, the cleaner it may be, the more accessible it will be, the more compliance we might see with our residents, and then, so that next meeting is on the fourth of November, and then Arts and Culture Commission had a meeting actually at six thirty, they're continuing on with kind of building that foundation, obviously, you had the opportunity to meet them today, so, and then, obviously, the community center is a hot topic, so we will be discussing that further, as you know, we have received an offer from the current tenant, and then we're also discussing potential, you know, what that lease may look like, or what that offer may look like, and that's all I have, thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, the Business Association had their meeting last week, and QuickTrip is coming, they're opening on the twenty-first, Thursday, the, he wasn't the general guy, the CEO, but he talked about, I was very excited about QuickTrip, I learned a lot of things about QuickTrip, I didn't know, it went on a little long, but it was informative, and the CEO will be there for, there on Thursday, so, looking forward for that company to do well, it'll be a good partnership, that's all I have, Your Honor.
And that red ribbon is October twenty, twenty, twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eight at eleven AM.
Yep.
Yeah.
If council can be there, that'd be, that'd be great, general business, well, actually, I got one on EDA, we, we had a meeting with the Port Authority, and kind of interesting to hear in regards to what they can offer cities, so we're gonna kind of inquire in regards to using them as possibly a consultant in some of our EDA doings, just preliminary right now, nothing real specific, but it was a very good meeting with the Port Authority, and, that's it, general business, Councilmember Wong?
And nothing, I think, thank you.
General business, Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, I want to talk about the ribbon cutting with the Rotary Park, that was, we all went, it was a nice event, it was beautiful weather, and I really love the partnership between the Rotarians and the City of North St. Paul, that couldn't have happened without them and without us, so it was, it was good, it was something that was in the making for many years, and now they have the restroom, and it's very well utilized on the Gateway Trail, so kudos again to the Rotary Club, and that was, it was very.
Lot of people.
There was a lot of people there, yeah, so, and the prayer breakfast, I will be going to that, I always go to that, the annual Oakdale Lake MO area, prayer breakfast will be on November tenth, and our prominent mayor will say some greetings with all the other mayors from the different areas, so it's always a good time, so, if you're a veteran, can you go for free or?
Free, yeah, veterans are free.
Yes, so that's at seven AM to nine AM over at the old Prom Center, which is now Inwood Oaks, and it's a very meaningful day, it's a, it's a good way to remember our veterans, so, thank you.
I don't know if you remember the old Rotary Park, it was just a sign and a picnic table and a little shelter, and I think they had a pop machine at, at one time there, so, just a very, yeah, the new park is really a nice park and a nice amenity for the, for the city and for the, for the trail, there are a lot of people that actually use that as their trailhead and take off from there, so, it's a good, good addition, Councilmember Thorson?
Yeah, just a couple of things, as Councilmember Wong stated, the redevelopment master plan, task forces meeting on Monday, October twenty-fifth, at six thirty here at City Hall, and then, they haven't received as much fanfare and attention, and they're not a big, huge project, but the new, new restaurant, Brothers Bistro, opened up at the old subway location, I had a chance to patronize them last week, or two weeks ago now, and it was great food, so, go check it out, and I was planning on making a bunch of comments about the community center, but being is that it's pretty obvious we're gonna have discussion about that at the next meeting, we'll just save it for then.
And I've got, the council, we have been, we have candidates that we're looking for for the city manager, that's due October twenty-sixth, I'd want to make sure that everybody is able to hook onto those links and everything and be able to see, see that, and it's very important that we look at that as a, as a group and put together our candidates that we feel are, are the top candidates, also, work for the downtown, outside of the new restaurant or the new Sentinel Building, I believe the cement's going in this week, I believe it should, the barrier should be out probably towards the end of the week, so.
Barriers are out now, and depending on what we get for rain tomorrow, they're hopefully gonna start on Wednesday, or Thursday, excuse me.
It'd be nice when all that is, is down and that street is wide open, other than that, I think that's all I have, the QuickTrip ribbon cutting, Councilmember Peterson mentioned that, be nice if everybody went down there for that, you know, as you said, at the Business Association, we heard from the team that's opening that up, and it's a pretty, pretty different business model, you know, it's a business model that the employees are well engaged, they get forty percent profit sharing, which is kind of unheard of for a business like that, so they really are employee base, they get a lot of happy employees that work for that company, so it's, be exciting to see that open, and then, I don't have anything else at this time, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Peterson, any other discussion, not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, meeting adjourned.